This is, I'd like to open the July 5th, 2022 meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. Those members in attendance are Cassandra Cherswello, Pete Punderson, Jonathan Torsia. I don't see Mr. Kingston, who was just here.
I'm here.
Okay, there he is, okay. And we're joined by the Director of Planning and Community Development Bailey Mitchell. So the first thing I need to do is see if there's anyone who might be in the audience who is recording this meeting. And if so, would you please raise your Zoom hand so you can be brought into the meeting? To identify yourself and the method in which you're recording the meeting. Not seeing anyone. I would just like to add that this meeting is being recorded by LCAT. So I believe our first order of business is the selection of officers for the 2022-2023 Planning Board year. So if there's anyone who has nominations or wishes to express interest in the position of Chair, Vice Chair, or Clerk, would you please indicate that now?
I would like to nominate Jonathan Torsia for Chair, Cassandra Cherswello for Vice Chair, and Pete Punderson for Clerk.
I will second all of those. Any discussion?
I don't have the ability to read anything. I just have this one computer, so that leaves me at a struggle to be the Clerk.
Okay, if people, if people are okay, and then if you would like me to step into that position on behalf of Pete or George, if that's your wish, someone can nominate me, and I would be happy to do that.
Mr. Punderson?
I would nominate Mr. Russell Denver for the Clerk position. And I would second all the other nominations.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, by roll call. Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Cherswello?
Aye.
Russell Denver is aye. Mr. Torsia?
I am an aye as well.
Thank you, everyone, for stepping up into these new positions. I think I will speak, perhaps I can speak on behalf of both George and Pete, as now I'm a former Planning Board Chairperson. Both having George and Pete as former Chairs has been very, very helpful to me. And they've been very kind and generous with their time. And I would like to do the same for you, John, as I know both George and Pete will continue to do so as well. So I think you're very fortunate. I've never been on board where there's three former Chairpeople. So I think you will get the benefit certainly of George's and Pete's wisdom. So best of luck to you, and the meeting is yours, and the meeting is yours.
I'm in good company and, you know, surrounded by some great solid Planning Board members here, so really appreciate the vote of confidence.
And Cassandra, the same goes to you. Anytime you need any help, I'm sure those three of us would be happy to help.
Thank you.
Oh, I don't have an agenda in front of me. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have it, I have it in front of me. I know, I think we have a pretty light agenda this evening. The next thing would be the approval of minutes. Back-to-back meetings, I know from last month, so first, the June 21st, 2022 Meeting Minutes.
So I will make a motion to approve those minutes.
I will second that.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do roll call. George?
Aye.
Russ?
Yes.
Cassandra?
Aye.
And Pete?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. And then we've got the June 28th, last week's Meeting Minutes. Any additions, revisions, corrections?
I just wanna, I'll make a motion to adopt or accept, yeah.
Second.
Okay, motion made and it's been seconded. Any further discussion?
I just want to add that I thought that that was a very fair and accurate description of what occurred at the meeting.
I would, I would agree with that sentiment.
There was a lot of it.
Hearing no other discussion, roll call, vote. George?
Aye.
Russ?
Aye.
Cassandra?
Aye.
And Pete?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. All right, the first item. Russ, I don't know if you have the agenda in front of you. If not, I can read it.
I'm sorry, I don't. I didn't know I was gonna get this new position. I'm sorry.
Do you want me to read it so you don't have to?
Thank you.
That'll be great, thank you.
Site Plan Review Waivers, case SPRW 2022-19. Request for a Site Plan Review Waiver for Rockstar Brow Lounge LLC, a salon at 69 Maple Street, GIS 65, Assessor's Parcel ID 27-14-33, and existing structure located in the Industrial Zoning District. Applicant Denise Peltier, 43 Glenn Drive, Wolverhampton, MA 01095.
So I did promote them a minute or so ago.
Yes, I see Denise in the, in our queue here. She's got her hand raised, but just no, no audio and no video. So if you can turn on Denise or Benny.
Well, no, she's, yeah, Denise has to do that.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
There you are.
There you go.
All right, hello.
So basically, what we kind of are looking for, just sort of an explanation of sort of what the business is, and, you know, hours of operation, just basic information on the business that you're looking to have at the location.
Sure, it's actually a permanent makeup salon with one treatment room, myself being the sole provider of the application of the treatments. For those of you that aren't familiar with permanent makeup, it's basically like a form of tattooing. So there, like I said, it would only be myself and a client by appointment only. So there wouldn't be a lot of traffic in the salon or on the street for that matter. And hours of operation, four days a week, 10 to 7.
I just, the one thing probably I have a first question about, I believe, and somebody from the board, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but have we had this type of business come into the town previously, and is there any need for the Board of Health to weigh in on this business?
So the Board, oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. I was gonna say that the Board of Health is coming in tomorrow for inspection.
Okay.
We do have other businesses in town that have done this before.
Okay, yeah, I was almost positive. I just wanted to make sure that my memory was correct. Is there any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, does somebody want to make a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
And then a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussions?
I guess that she does need the approval of the Board of Health.
Yes, I've sent, I've talked with Alex from the Board of Health and gave her all my permits, including my CPR, bloodborne pathogen, my training as a provider for the body art license. And as I mentioned, she's scheduled tomorrow to come to check out the salon that I did all that she asked.
Okay, great. So unless there's any other discussion, we'll move to roll call vote. George?
Hi.
Russ?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
And Pete?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Best of luck to you guys.
Thank you very, very much.
All right, so I think our next items here, we're down into other business. I see discussion of 1416 Maple Street. And I know there were some drawings or some renderings that were shared with us recently, so.
Yeah, so if Josh Klein could be brought into the meeting, I'm not sure, Josh, if you have anyone else with you, have them raise their hand as well. Yeah, I'm I'm trying here. And I'll just give the board a little bit of background. So Chase had met with Mary and I. I asked, I requested the meeting just to discuss the potential of a mixed-use overlay going into the center of town. And given that this parcel was right on the rotary, I just wanted to make sure that they were aware of the town's potential plan to do that. And so we kind of met with them, and I suggested that they just bring this preliminary discussion to the Board to show their plans before they come for their approval. All right, you want me to take it away from here, Bailey?
Yeah, so it's sort of just give the Board sort of a, yeah, preliminary kind of of where things are at currently with this, with this project.
Yeah, no problem. So my name is Josh Klein. I'm with Stonefield Engineering Design. I'm a licensed professional engineer in both site civil as well as traffic. So we represent Chase Bank. We work with Chase Bank across not only just the Northeast, but the country. My primarily, my primary focus is the Northeast. We've done a lot of work in Massachusetts as well as other states. And they're really, they're really excited, you know, at this potential opportunity. So when our team gets involved, you know, that means that they have a site under contract. The site's been reviewed by their design team, and it's been approved by the real estate team. So they're, they're really excited to be able to bring a new store to East Long Meadow. So what I can do is share my screen and kind of just kind of talk about it. You know, the, you know, at this stage, we did want to do a, kind of have this conceptual review because we do understand the challenges. I don't think we're going into this blind, you know. With Bailey's help, he kind of gave us a little bit of background. I think, Russ, you might have even provided Bailey some of your feedback, which was very helpful. So, you know, we, we understand that this is, you know, not only, I think, a busy street, but we're entering in a rotary that has its challenges, and we get that. But I think, you know, what we wanted to kind of talk a little bit about tonight and get some feedback on is that, you know, putting Chase Bank at this location, we think is, is a perfect location for a bank or for this type of use. You know, one of the challenges is, you know, this is a, this is a challenging property. So just kind of, it's in the center of the screen, so we're kind of, we front along Maple Street. There also is kind of this cross-connection with the field lot, which is the town-owned lot along Shaker. So we're kind of right at this intersection of the roundabout. So those familiar, it's about a 5,500 square foot. It's half a nail salon, half, I think, right now it's a faux delicious as the tenant. At one point in time, it was a chicken restaurant. So it's, they're kind of two busy users, you know, in comparison. So the bank would be about, about 3,000 square feet. So, you know, by putting the bank here, you're looking at a pretty substantial, like 2,600 square foot reduction in building area. But where, you know, the site becomes very challenging is the access. You know, I think from a traffic engineering perspective, from a trip generation perspective, this is a much better fit for this corner. You know, banks have a big pass-by component, so what that means is we're taking traffic that's already on the road today. And, you know, it kind of aligns very well with kind of the peak hours of the roadway. You know, we're taking those trips that are already on the road. Banking's a convenience-based industry, you know, people aren't really going out of their way or, you know, kind of making their, their commute more difficult to go to a bank, especially now with online banking. So it's really meant for, you know, people that, you know, need to use the facility. There's a financial services component with these new modern-day banking, which is why you kind of see Chase expanding into a lot of, a lot of the markets across the Northeast. And another reason I think this is a good fit is if you start introducing the idea of, you know, mixed-use or busier commercial-type uses, all that leads to is more traffic. So there's obviously kind of a big concern there when you start talking about kind of then introduction of multi-story buildings or residential components. You know, a bank is a very good, I think, anchor to, you know, this section of downtown. It's also a very good sign for revitalization. You know, people want to see strong tenants on these types of corners. So this, you know, in our, our opinion, this is a great kind of first step into getting some developers and redevelopment in this area is to kind of take a, a building and a site that's really in need of redevelopment and put a brand-new kind of high-end user such as Chase Bank. So I did want to also share, I'll just kind of throw up everything, and then I think one of the big things we want to talk about is access. So just kind of zooming in a little bit, the building is going to kind of be in the center of the site. The intention is to keep the two existing access points. So one of the big differences is today, the, the access points are kind of uncontrolled. There's no real signage. There, there are some markings. They're a little bit faded, but people can kind of make any movement. The kind of initial proposal is to kind of maintain a full movement driveway, so to allow lefts on Maple and then to limit the other driveway kind of closer to the rotary, just to right in, right out. So people wouldn't be able to kind of make any left movements in or out. They would be kind of forced to go right. And then the intention really is to maintain the access with the city, city fields that people could kind of, you know, use that, you know, cross-access. And we understand this parking lot during a game can get pretty busy, so we want to try to save as many of those spaces as we can. And then you can see we kind of have the drive-through component along the back of the building as well. So that kind of gives the, the general layout. The, I just wanted to kind of throw up some example architecture. So this is kind of a, another project that was recently approved and kind of shows some example of the architecture and kind of scheme that we're kind of seeing. I think one of the nice features is this kind of idea of this jewel box. So it's this nice kind of lit-up kind of glass corner. And the, the intention would really be to kind of put that in a prominent location along the, kind of the front of Maple to kind of draw the eye and the intention to some of that, that detail. So they're using kind of higher-end, you know, more modern materials through different kind of penetrations and canopy elements they use to kind of break the building up. So it feels like it has a little bit more diverse architecture than maybe what you find in old traditional banking. And then one of the other nice parts about Chase Bank is, you know, you're looking at, you know, high-end landscaping improvements, street trees, landscaping around the entirety of the site. Kind of see where I zoom in, they like to put a lot of foundation plannings along the buildings. You can kind of highlighting some of the planner areas to kind of soften the look of the, of the building. And then it'll be, you know, all ADA accessible, including kind of reconstruction of the frontages as well as, you know, there's a big focus on lighting. It's all going to be kind of LED downward-facing, dark-skY compliant lighting, so it'll be kind of a really top-to-bottom full, full upgrade. So that's kind of the, the general overview. And I think what we're trying to get is some feedback from the Board, I think, on the, the layout itself. You know, anything that, you know, any concerns upfront and then kind of an initial. We have, as part of the formal submission, we prepare a formal traffic study. And we'd kind of, you know, bring all of it to the table. You know, this type of use typically doesn't trigger the need for a traffic study based on the size of the building and the user. We're well under 100 trips, which is kind of the industry threshold. However, you know, through working with your peer review engineer, we definitely would work with them and make sure they get whatever data they need. And I think that big component is that pass-by component that you'll even hear in the study as well as the conversation, that you're kind of taking cars that are already on the road today off. I think for a reference point, you know, we pulled on a, on a site we did kind of about, and maybe, you know, 30, 40 minutes away, which was about 3,500 square feet, so about 500 square feet bigger than this Chase. You know, during the, the peak, you know, Saturday midday, which is the busiest time typically for a bank. I mean, you were looking at, you know, only about, you know, 25 to 30 kind of new trips. So you're really talking about generating a small amount in comparison to the volume that uses this rotary every day, kind of a really small amount of traffic. And I think the other thing we would kind of look to do is, is work to make sure there's proper signage, striping, even modifications to the driveways to ensure that certain movements can't happen. I think that's typically the bigger concern, right, is the way this is drawn, and this is just a concept plan from Chase's design team, is you know, this driveway would, you know, we would be more than open to proposing, you know, modifications to the curbing to have physical restrictions to prevent people from making left movements in. You know, and even kind of making sure that there's curbing that forces people out to the right, so they can't even, you know, have the option of making that left. I'm happy to, to jump into any, any more kind of detail, answer some questions, but we'd love to get some feedback. You know, we're, Chase is ready to go. You know, we're, we're basically kind of looking to get some feedback tonight so that we can kind of move forward with the formal site plans, traffic report, and submission to the Board.
Great. I just had one quick question. The, where the ATM, the drive-through now, is that going to be one lane or two lanes? It just didn't look completely clear to me on the map here, or when I was looking at it earlier. That's two lanes, correct?
Correct. So there'd be kind of a, the inside lane would be the drive-up lane, and then there would be, there would be additional striping here in reality when we, when we put the full plan together, and then there's that bypass lane on the other side to get someone around.
So, yeah, you know, looking at it, I think the, probably the most important aspect is obviously because of the location of it, you know, this area in particular attracts a significant amount of traffic. Particularly, you know, Maple Street comes to mind, that particular area when the high school's getting out or when people are getting out of work, that really can build up. So I, I would definitely be open to perhaps seeing what type of options there could be to force people to not do that, that left turn perhaps, especially during those busy periods of time. But those are just some of my first initial thoughts. I don't know if anybody from the Board has any thoughts that they'd like to add.
A couple of questions, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I assume this is going to be a teardown, an entirely new building, building?
Correct. That would be, it would be a kind of a, a full demo and a brand, brand-new structure.
I'm sure you're aware that there are already three other banks almost on the circle and at least two more within shouting distance.
Correct. We are, we are aware of other banks in the area. I think it's a good sign. I mean, when you have, you know, other banks coming in, especially someone like Chase Bank, so you know, again, it's a, you know, Chase is looking to kind of come in and make a, make a really nice investment to clean up this corner.
Another question, I looked at your internal floor plan, which we have nothing, no real say over, but it was really unusual from what I've seen in banking. And I'm wondering if the business model that Chase is bringing is different from a traditional bank? Because it's like two teller stations and a living room. Can you give us some insight on that?
Yeah, no problem. So, you know, baking, you know, you kind of did a great segue. Baking has changed a lot. You know, modern-day baking is, is much different than it was. There's obviously outside of those four walls, more of a kind of online component to it. So what they've, they've kind of looked to shift more that these, the physical locations are more driven towards, you know, those that need that in-person help, so you still have the teller windows there. But there's, Chase offers a really kind of big financial services component. So that's why you kind of see more of the living room with some of the side offices where a lot of people that are using this facility might be going to kind of talk about financial planning or investments or things like, things like that. So that's why you kind of see a, kind of a less of a focus on the teller windows and more of a focus on that, on that financial component.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So can you just clarify for us the number of parking spaces on both sides of the building and then the town-owned lot?
Correct. So I'll pull up the survey as well, so we can see. So there's, there's 11 spaces on the left-hand side that I'm circling and 10 spaces on the right-hand side. Includes the 2 ADA. They're not by code required 2 ADA, but they do like to provide, especially, you know, with, sometimes with their, the demographic that they have, they like to always have a second option, just in case one of the ADA spaces is full. So if I show the survey, this is where there's a little bit. It's not kind of a clean break between the city parking
Right.
and the property parking. So you can kind of see that, you know, these last kind of three spaces, including that ADA space, are, you know, partially on the, on Chase's property. So they are looking to kind of maintain all of that parking. You know, I think Chase is always kind of putting a good foot forward, and I think would be willing to kind of clean up some of the striping and connections through here. I think one of the challenges which we'll have to work with, you know, not only the Board and Bailey and the other professionals at the, at the town is, you know, kind of properly documenting the necessary easements for this site. So we did, we just got back the ALTA survey. And in our initial review of the title, there aren't any kind of existing access easements in place, even though we know that kind of exists today. So that would be kind of, I think, one of the, the challenges outside of this board that we'd have to kind of work with the, work with the town on.
And can you talk a little bit about some of the landscaping improvements that you would foresee the bank doing?
Yeah, no problem. So I'll just zoom in a little bit.
Specifically, where you go from Maple on to Shaker, that area right there.
This area right here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there, there was, I'd have to get the exact date. There was an easement that was put in place that allowed the town to improve this area, which is where you see that, those streetscape elements. But again, I think, you know, there is definitely an opportunity, you know, working with the Board and the Board's professionals to kind of further even kind of clean up this area. You know, whether it's incorporating, you know, new landscaping, you know, repairing. I think there's definitely some damage to some of the bricks and the hardscape. So I think, you know, Chase would envision not only, you know, kind of cleaning up their site, but also cleaning up that corner, corner as part of the improvements.
And, and Mr. Chair, my last question would be, with the new model of banking, what do you foresee as number of employees on a daily basis?
Yeah, so I believe, I'm just gonna pull up, it's typically, you know, you see around, you know, five employees, give or take. You know, during non-peak hours, you might have a little bit less, but I think that's a kind of a good general rule of thumb.
Okay, thank you.
One, one last comment. You talked about this slighted portion of the building. One thing you need to think about is to, yes, draw the eye, but understand that we don't need to distract people who are trying to navigate that center area. And we did have a bank on the other side of the, of the center that installed a sign that was glaring right down into people who were driving through. And it had to be moved, actually rotated 90 degrees because it was such a distraction. It was causing issues. And you need to think about that, that while you want to draw the eye, you don't want to distract people too badly from trying to figure out where they're going.
No, that's good. That's a, that's definitely some good feedback. And, you know, we'll definitely ensure that, you know, all the sightlines are adequately met, and we'll ensure that the, the signage kind of isn't intrusive to those that are using the surrounding roadways.
Hey, so are there any other comments or questions from the Board? Hearing none. Well, Josh, thank you for the presentation this evening. So appreciate it.
Yeah, sorry to, to inter, interrupt, Mr. Is there any way to, you know, I think the driveway closest to Maple Street is a very big hinge point. You know, if, I think the, you know, the bank's trying to kind of understand some level of comfortability. If, you know, if they were to provide potentially that, like, those physical restriction, you know, is this board kind of comfortable with, with its location? I think the inability to get this driveway, and obviously this, we have to get, you know, other professionals to review it, and this isn't, I don't think, holding the Board or any of the Board members to it, to the decision, but they're trying to understand if this, you know, the location, you know, overall the Board's comfortable with. You know, pending we do a physical restriction to the movements, because it really hinges the entire application. You know, without that, you know, at a minimum right out, but without this right-in, right-out here, it kind of would significantly impact the ability to, to redevelop the site, especially with maintaining the kind of cross-access. So I don't know if there's a way to do, like, if you guys have done it in the past, a mock vote or to hear Board members' opinion on the driveway. I'm just, and again, we're just trying to get their, they're ready to, to kind of move forward. and again, we're just trying to get their, they're ready to, to kind of move forward. Um, and I think they, they just, you know, really hoping to kind of get a little bit more thoughts on maybe that one location.
I, I don't think, we've never done a mock vote. What, what I would just say, speaking for myself, um, I would be open uh, and interested to see what type of um, restrictions um, would actually be able to perhaps work in that area. Um, and you know, generally as a concept, I think I would be comfortable with um, that area in ingress and egress. Um, but I, you know, kind of defer to the rest of the board on what they think, uh, what their comfortability would be.
Uh, I, I'll tell you, I'd be very comfortable with restricting left-hand turn at the uh, driveway closest to the beginning of the rotary and just allowing only right-hand turn.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with that, um, especially because someone making a left-hand turn cannot really see um, where people are coming out of the rotary. Because they don't make that split until uh, a few tens of feet down the road, knowing whether they're going to Shaker Road or Maple Street. And that, you know, right now, there is no restriction. Uh, I don't know that we've had any accidents there as a result of that. But um, it certainly would be, I think, an improvement to have it restricted that way.
Uh, Cassandra, Pete, any thoughts?
Um, I would agree if we were to restrict it to just the right-hand in and out. I think that would be better, especially because there's a crosswalk right there as well.
I have no comments.
I think it would be advantageous if you had some signage to indicate to people who were coming uh, west on Maple Street that there is a driveway further on down. Right now, the sign there is minimal.
So I think, Josh, that should give you a pretty good uh, insight into kind of how the board is feeling.
Oh, that was, that was perfect. Really, you know, really appreciate, appreciate the time. Um, and hopefully, you know, Chase is going to ask how long, you know, we can, it takes us to prepare plans, but we will see you guys hopefully very soon.
Awesome.
And then, I noticed you closed on the property uh, last week.
I don't believe potentially the contract purchaser may have, may have closed. Uh, this is a, for us, it's a ground lease. But I do think all intention is to, you know, move forward very quickly. Alright, thank you everyone. Have a nice evening.
Absolutely. Have a great evening. Um, okay, so our next um, under other business, the discussion of downtown mixed-use overlay zoning district. Uh, so Bailey, if you have more information on that.
Yeah, so I'm actually, the only update I have tonight is, um, things have been really crazy. So I haven't had as much progress as I wanted to have, um, unfortunately, but I do have a, the survey that I mentioned last meeting, I will have that up on our website, on the town's website uh, by the end of this week. Uh, my intention was to have it on today, but again, just super busy. So, um, so yeah, and then hopefully we'll have, if the meeting's not too busy with other business next, next meeting, um, I'd like to bring a little bit more for the board to discuss. So it might be ten, fifteen minutes um, next meeting, so.
Awesome. Pete?
Bailey, exactly what would be the borderline of this overlay, this district that you're proposing for the entire downtown?
So, yeah, so I've been working on, um, you know, mock-ups of proposed outlines. Um, and that I, I would just say that that is kind of, I'd, I'd rather just wait and show you um, some of the proposals. And then that's kind of the discussion that I want to have in the next meeting, so.
Okay. Russ?
I just ask that you send a link to the survey to everybody on the board.
Yeah.
Please, thanks.
Will do.
I think that sort of parlay's into the director's report, our final business of the evening.
Yeah, and I do have a couple of things there. Um, first, just a reminder uh, to the board and the public that our meetings will uh, resume in person, starting next um, meeting, which is July nineteenth, we will be meeting in the Council on Aging Media Room. And uh, the time will remain the same as of now, um, at six PM. And then um, for board discussion, uh, I have Nina and I uh, will be attending the National Night Out to um, allow for, you know, more public input on the survey, uh, and then try to be there to, you know, talk with the public about um, the overlay district and a couple of other things, just community development related. Uh, we're going to have a booth out there. So if anyone, um, we, we do have a meeting that night. And I was going to ask if, if anyone would like to hold that meeting or if we uh, would be able to officially cancel it. Um, due to neither of us being able to go, um, that, you know, you all can still have a meeting. It would, we would just have to make arrangements for that to happen, so.
What night is it?
Um, I believe it's August second.
As long as there is no really, really pressing business, I would be open to that. Um, so long as rest of the board feels that.
That's fine. We could also, you know, uh, move it a week out uh, on the ninth or whatever the board's comfortable with.
I, I'd be comfortable with canceling it unless there's something really pressing that we need to do. Um, I, it'd be great if some of the board members could come down to National Night Out. It's always worked out really well.
Yeah, the town's had some great success with that. And I know I've, I've been down there a couple of times over the years, so. Um, uh, I would just, I want to call on uh, Mary. Mary, I apologize. I know you had some comments on the previous discussion item. So I apologize. I did not see your raised hand when we were in our uh, sharing our screen or the screen was shared, so. If you wanted to.
Yeah, thanks, John. That's all right. I just had a question for Josh, but it'll keep. It was, and I think George alluded to it uh, about the access in that driveway from the westbound lane of Maple. That, that's probably the most dangerous uh, access. I mean, they were talking about restricting it to a right-hand exit. But maybe uh, eliminating an ability to turn in from the west lane of Maple would be a good idea too. That was it.
You know, in thinking about that through the chair, where you come out of that parking lot on the Shaker Road, they should limit the ability to go left there also. The traffic, because people are going to go through that open lane and think they can go, well, they wouldn't be taking a left turn anyway. But anybody coming out of that access and egress point shouldn't be able to turn left because that's another real break in the, in the traffic flow and a real potential for an accident, if you look at it.
So without, yes, George?
I'd say it's, it's really funny. There are times a day when there's no traffic there and it doesn't make any difference. And then there are times a day when uh, Milton Bradley lets, lets out, when um, school lets out at noon and commute hour, when it's chaos. So it all depends on when you're there. And people have to use judgment, but directing in the right way is great, I think.
Yeah, I would definitely agree. I think it'll be interesting to see what uh, will be proposed. Um, so Bailey, I'm not sure if you had anything else left in the director's report.
Um, no, that's it.
And the next meeting will be July nineteenth, so. Uh, any other business this evening? Uh, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.